Go.
All right, December 17th. Welcome everybody. Final meeting of 2018 for the Miami Township Board of Trustees. We're one trustee short, we're also a road administrator short and a fire chief short this evening, but we're gonna make it up in quantity and quality. We're gonna do a small amount of brief amount of business and then couple things. I gotta think of glasses. Brief amount of business and then move right into the part of the meeting. So, I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of December 3rd.
So move.
Move, I will second that and further discussion regarding those minutes, yes. For some reason, you double entered half, most of the correspondence.
Did I?
Yeah. You put all the correspondence in and then put it in again.
It's because computers don't like me and I hate them, so.
So now they're right.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
May we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Muter?
Yes.
I now entertain a motion to adopt minutes of special meeting, December 11th.
I was not present at that meeting, but I will go ahead and move that we adopt those minutes.
Is that okay?
No, I don't think we can do that. Why don't we put that off till next meeting?
Till next year.
Yeah.
That makes sense?
You pretty much, I think you pretty much have to be there.
As simple as it were, as simple as it was.
I didn't think about that for 14 minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I now entertain a motion to approve payment of bills of $29,817.89, broken down in general fund, $2,854.79, fire fund, $17,026.15, cemetery fund, $98.94, EMS billing, $4,263.18, road bridge, $5,574.83, capital projects, zero. Anything else? Is there a motion?
I so moved.
Second, any further discussion regarding payment of those counts? If there are none, may we vote please?
Mr. Muter?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
To help out timing on our agenda, I'm going to dispense with correspondence. Fire department report, road administrator and cemetery report the evening and I think we will then continue after information from the floor. I think we talked about asking Dave to go first, right?
That works.
Okay. You have anything that you'd like to begin with?
Well, yes, I did bring a resolution of support for the very trail, if you do, if that's something that you would consider and if that's possible with, you know, with Mr. Crockett not being here. But I had sent some sort of information and I hope that was illuminating as far as what our plans are and what the threat requires and what we're putting in place. You know, I feel like we're making very good progress on this application. We've got letters of coordination from all the environmental agencies that we need now. Just letters saying that, you know, we're working with you and those kind of what we're gonna need for you to get this approved. And, you know, we definitely have learned something about trail maintenance. So, that's where we sit right now.
Okay. I'm gonna go out on a limb a little bit and speak briefly about what I think are some issues that are going on with us and mostly zoning issues and then Richard's here and I'm gonna probably turn it over to him to continue the discussion. But going through this, I kind of see things, instead of one issue, I believe there are two issues and I highlighted some things in your benefits provided letter and just going over those very briefly, they will lead into why I think we've moved this into two different categories. We're talking about your writing that you, some of your benefits are that you're going to provide regular dinners, gardening workshops, concerts, install picnic tables at appropriate points, provide for weddings, dinners, educational events, gonna do some retailing, gonna have business traffic out there at the site. You refer to agritourism, problems with traffic, hazards and backups. With those sorts of things in mind, again, I'm gonna go to the zoning, but I don't believe any of those are permitted uses in an agricultural district. Now, they may be permitted to a larger or smaller extent in an agritourism district, which is an overlay, which my understanding is the parcel more than likely qualifies for. Again, this is a conversation between you all. But as such, David, I don't see how we can go to the second half of this issue. That is, our support for something that's not a permitted use, or at least intended the use of it, is for not permitted use in the district that is in. Now, that's gonna mess your timing up because for you to get an agrizoning designation is gonna require a bit of time and you can discuss that with Richard. So, I'm about as far out in that limb as I wanna go. Unless you wanna jump in, you know, I'd like to have them make a conversation.
One, I would just add to your consideration of how does this fit with zoning. Education institution is permitted in agriculture zone.
Absolutely.
Before we get into a full on, and I am very, I would really like to learn a lot more about pursuing an agricultural designation and the timing that would take. I'd wanna say that some of that language is from last year's application and that particular page is one that I didn't get to update a whole lot before sending it over to you. A lot of those programs that we had in mind, we are definitely toning down those ideas for the time being. And we, if you look at our calendar now, we have almost exclusively educational events on the calendar. And that, yeah, I mean, we've learned more about, you know, effective programming and land use and those kind of things as the year has progressed. And we're definitely interested in pursuing that designation. But for the time being, the kinds of, a lot of the kinds of programming that you have on there are more speculative than are on today. So, I do apologize that that was, I didn't update that from last year's application. So, that's what I wanted to put in there. And now, if, you know, if what Mr. Muter was saying, if that brought things to mind for you, I would love to hear what those are.
Well, this is the first time I've heard that.
List.
Okay. So, shall I speak to this now?
Certainly.
Okay. The, the building of the trail is, from a zoning standpoint, is a totally separate issue from what's happening on your property, okay? But there's kind of a funny chicken and egg thing, which is our comprehensive plan talks about, you know, what we as township, all township residents have agreed how we want the future to unfold outside of Yellow Springs, says that we consider multi-use paths a good thing and specifically we say that, if I interpret this right and it's a little bit vague, paths that have a destination are what we want, as opposed to just a recreational loop or something like that. But there's a chicken and egg, there isn't a destination yet, okay? So, you know, can you encourage building a trail to something that may or may not materialize? And then you could say, well, the trail is part of what will make it materialize. Anyway, that's one issue that I wanna bring up as far as the plan goes. The second one is that it says, when there's something like this, which is, which is part of, has a component that the township is interested in and also has a private or citizens component, the citizens need to work with the township to talk, to work out, does this make sense? Not a private entity. Okay, so that's the second one. The third thing is that overall, our comprehensive plan says we want to preserve the natural and agricultural areas of the township, okay? And I spent a little time looking at your drawing and doing some quick measurements and it looks like you're talking about cutting down over an acre of trees to put this trail in.
Well, actually.
20 feet wide, 3,000 feet through the woods.
Well, we, I do have an engineer coming out soon so we can rewalk the trail and one of the landowners, the main one who owns the woods, has upped his offer to a place where if the engineer feels like it might work just as well, we may go to the north of that big stand of trees that's on Rick Donahoe's property. So, that would be, that would be cut down.
But the point is, so I mentioned that just as, but then, you know, whether we're taking out trees or we're taking out farmland, we're taking over an acre of land out of either natural or agricultural production, which is not the goal of the comprehensive plan, okay? So, there's, there is that issue in a very general sense. And those, and for example, the, most of the trail crosses prime agricultural land, which is specifically, you know, the best soils for agriculture. It's not in an area where there are some standard soils or there isn't, you know, good, I mean, from the soil survey and that's how prime agricultural soils are defined. So, it's not in a low-impact kind of place, all right? It's in a higher-impact kind of place. And then, as you know, it's also challenging because it's also in a fairly, lack of a better term, wet place. It's got two stream crossings, one which has a significant flood plain. So, it's a challenge to do it with minimum impact to the natural environment. So, that's, those are the principal things that I wanna bring out that are written here in the plan and I excerpted most of those things, both, you know, positive and negative about the trail and sent that to the trustees and if you wanna get a copy of that, I can send it to you as well.
Great, yeah, no, I would love to have a copy of that so we can address all those concerns as best we can. I do wanna point out that, I mean, if we do, like you say, it's either, you know, it's got, there's either forested land or agricultural land there, there's nothing else. So, but if we did, I'm just kind of, you know, in answer to what you're saying about the agricultural use, with it not being that wide of a trail, there is an area, I've walked it, and there is an area just to the south of those fields, right by the tree line, that's consistently mowed, it's a lane that's used for, you know, agricultural upkeep and vehicles turning and whatnot, between the tree line and the agricultural area. So, I think, you know, it's quite possible that if we put a trail in there on the 20-foot corridor, that impact towards either forest or agriculture could be minimized.
In some areas that's possible, in other areas it isn't.
Right.
But I've walked it too.
Yeah. Okay. So, right, so exactly how those things are gonna be addressed, I guess, is the big, you know, where we're getting to.
Right. Well, I mean, one of the things that is in the plan and I know from experience, grading, moving soil around is one of the most invasive things you can do to the environment. It changes drainage patterns, it changes, you know, the soil horizons. You're going to be bringing in many, 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 many tons of gravel. You're significantly changing the environment. So, that, you know, we have, there has to be a very strong, I think, reason to give up that land as it is, especially since, I don't know if you've pursued, but Daniel Springs Road has a generous right-of-way. There probably is the potential of having a trail with the highway, but not on the highway. And that would not impact any agricultural land.
What is the width of the Daniel Springs?
I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I just know from working with ODOT and picking up trash along Daniel Springs Road that we pick up a little trash out of a large area between the pavement and the fence lines or field lines. It is, it is a big swale at this point on both sides, so it isn't a slam dunk, but there probably is that potential. I don't know, you have to ask, I'm not the engineer.
Well, I do have an engineer coming out soon for a visit. So, you know, that gives me one more thing to ask him about.
What's the deadline for this cycle?
February 1st.
And is that annual or biannual?
Annual.
I'd like to swing back real quick to get another chicken in the egg, where we started, whether it's, whether it's an agritourism enterprise, zone, whatever, or educational usage, either one of those is going to have to go through Richard and be permitted formally. I mean, you cannot just, I mean, in zoning, at least you can't designate your own, okay, this is what we are and so consequently, we can do this, that, other thing. It has to go through the process of being screened by the zoning administrator, inspector.
David, I've had a couple of meetings where we've talked about this at length and everybody said, well, we don't know what we're doing yet, to me.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, we're still figuring it out, we're still deciding, even though things are operating now, which are not exactly agriculture, okay?
Well, that's one thing I wanted to ask about. What were you saying, Mr. Hollister, about agro, I mean, agricultural, education, educational activities being allowed somewhat on an agricultural?
They, I can't recite it word for word, but in the first couple sentences of our agriculture chapter of zoning. Yeah. The general categories of land use, mostly is farm description and then it says church or educational institution.
Don, you're in the old one, but we just amended that whole chapter. Those extra things are long. They weren't not compatible with the current plan.
Well, they may be wrong.
They're, I didn't bring my code with me tonight, so we can discuss that as a.
The new code's on the desk.
Is the, is the update, is it updated for the agricultural section?
It's, it's, there's an attachment to it.
Oh, there's an attachment, okay.
A complete attachment.
Well, if you, do we wanna go through that now?
I think it would be illustrative for them to.
Are you getting one, Don?
I think I'm getting it.
Oh, okay.
To know where we are.
It would be and I, you know, I feel like I should apologize for using your time.
So, we're here, we're here, this is public time, you can spend all you time.
Well, you know, I.
Steve might go to sleep, but.
I always do prefer to look, before I dive into a pool, I do like to look and see what the footage is, but then when you think. When you think you know what it is and then you dive and then you, you know, you discover it's different when you're in the water.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Then you gotta redive, so I do, I just wanna apologize.
Because you'll vote for government, we do a lot of swimming here.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to say that wasn't my intention and I'm not, I'm not trying to bring something hectic in, which is.
That's fine, that's fine. You know, I guess had I been asked, you know, earlier, I might have saved a little time and suggested you spend more time with Richard than with the board. But, you know, as I say, we're here and we're interested. And, you know, in a general way, we're certainly supportive, but, you know, it has to be something that we can do. You know, if you don't know, I'm gonna tell you, trustees, townships can only do what is allowed by the Ohio revised code. If it doesn't say that we can do it, we can't do it. And virtually everything that we do, if we're not sure of what we're doing, most of the time, we have to run it by, generally we have to run it by our county prosecutor who represents us legally and give us an opinion as to whether it's something that we could do. I ran this by the prosecutor briefly and it really probably wasn't enough detail for, you know, for an exact opinion, but what we did have, she reminded us that townships are not empowered to provide services to non-public entities. So, that could have ended up being a bit problematic in maintenance and repairs, you know, for a project like this. Again, that's a little premature, but I do know there's a foundation of that in the code.
I see.
That is something else. You touched on this in the very back, if you didn't.
Yeah, right, in the front, there's some material, but it's not all of it.
Oh.
So, I'm, I would prefer, since I'm not familiar with this latest printing, to not say absolutely one thing or another until I have my book in front of me. But because of the comprehensive plan saying that primarily we want the rural areas of Miami Township to be agriculture or natural areas as they already are, that we eliminated most of the other uses in the agricultural zone, except residential, which we've always, always had, single-family dwellings. The, there, so, many of those things that used to be there, like public facilities and educational institutions and churches are no longer there for the agricultural zone. They're considered to be appropriate in other zones, but not in that one. The agritourism designation requires whatever you do to be directly agriculturally related. It isn't, the tourism isn't the key component, it's the agri in front of it. So, for example, a wedding is not agritourism.
Right.
Okay? Education about agriculture would be appropriate, okay? Education about some other subject would not be appropriate. It has to be that connection with agriculture. And there's a long, fairly wide definition of agriculture here in the state of Ohio. You can read that so you can see what you might be able to relate. You could probably teach somebody wine-making, it would pass for being agriculturally related. But you, but you probably couldn't teach somebody how to make ice cream because that's not been considered by the state to be part of agriculture.
I see, okay. I mean, I think if, you know, if I look at our calendar, and it just was today, I think, you know, all the programming I can think of right now is agriculturally related. And, you know, I would, of course, I would wanna look at that definition and I guess it's in the Ohio code or.
Well, we have it in our code too.
Okay, yeah, so, is that a publicly available document?
I can send you a.
One way or another, yes.
Okay. Flash drive in my pocket.
We have, you can read off the, agricultural production, so I have. Okay. Commercial animal or poultry husbandry, aquaculture, aquaculture meaning of farming of algae, agriculture, animal husbandry or poultry husbandry, production for a commercial purpose of timber, field crops, tobacco, fruits, vegetables, nursery stock, or environmental shrubs, ornamental trees, flowers or sod. The growth of timber for a non-commercial purpose, if the land on which the timber is grown is contiguous or part of a parcel of land under common ownership that is otherwise devoted exclusively to agricultural use. Or any combination of such, such husbandry production or growth. It includes the processing, drying, storage and marketing of agricultural products when those activities are conducted in conjunction with such husbandry production or growth. Land devoted to biodiesel production, biomass energy production, electric or heat energy production, or biologically derived methane gas production, if the land on which the production facility is located is contiguous to or part of a parcel of land under common ownership that is otherwise devoted exclusively to agricultural use. I think I can stop there, there's, it's very general, but it still is what most of us think of as agriculture.
Yeah, yeah, I was able to follow that pretty well.
Back to a version of what you started with, there are two, you see two issues. One is a trail to a destination and then the, that begs the question, which is not part of the grant application, therefore not of our formal, directly of our formal resolution, what is, is the destination a use that has been permitted in the zoning? Is the construction of a trail something that would have to be permitted? That is, if a farmer decides to put in a road.
Farmer can put all the roads they want, there's no, we have no regulations.
And if a permitted use in an agriculture zone wants to put in a bike trail that involves serious, a bridge, grading, then does it require a zoning permit?
My response is that if someone opens up their land to public use, that's a little different than them putting in a driveway, okay, on their property for their use. There's, there's a, I know in terms of things like liability, there's a big difference whether you charge somebody to do something or don't charge you to do something. I also know in terms of, if you let the public onto your property, it becomes difficult to ever stop the public from coming onto your property because you've kind of given away that land to the public. I don't know how a trail like this and its funding works. Say the Donahoe's said, you know, this, this, we turned out, we don't really like having this trail across our property, can they close it?
Well, I mean, in this, in that particular case, he's offering to donate land.
Okay, so he's actually selling land, so it'll be your land?
Donating, yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's still changing hands.
Yes.
Ownership is the critical component.
Yes, now, one of the other landowners is just gonna give us an easement and that's for a certain amount of time.
Okay.
I imagine they have legal recourse if they wanted to revoke that, but I don't know.
Anyway, so now we're changing to, see, what gets interesting in all of this is now that you're, let's say it's all your land, all right? You're now doing an activity, which is providing a multi-use path, which is in agriculture.
Oh, the trail itself is not in agriculture?
Right.
Even if it beats two.
I'm just running that around in my head saying, oh, if it's not a public path, then, I mean, even getting your funding, doesn't that make it have to be?
Yeah, it has to be a public trail.
I don't know what, how something is guaranteed is public if it's on private property.
Yeah, absolutely, it has to be a guaranteed public trail.
And we're comfortable with that.
What do we need, what do we need to do or know to have an up or down vote on a resolution of support?
I would need to know at the very least that it's a. I would need to know, at the very least, that it's a designated agritourism area, and that's a conditional use, and it has to be approved by the BCA. It, it, in, the bottom line is, I don't see how I can support something that I don't know what I'm supporting, because we don't know it exists yet.
Well, I mean, with the destination.
Right.
I guess, I have to, a big deal for us is going to be the legality of educational programming. That's what has been going on and what, so that's why, that's why I would make the argument that it already is a destination, because we have done some educational programming out there with the schools and, you know, a workshop that was definitely agriculturally related. So we do have a track record of people attending things.
But, and I'm sure you would have no problem speculating, you know, convincing the Board of Zoning Appeals of that, and then being granted a agritourism, I don't know, really, what is it, Richard?
Well, it, it, it's a permit, does it sound like it's the permitted use on your property for what you're going to do?
So that, that would need, what, to do educational programming, we would need the agritourism designation.
Designation, yeah, that's not, it's not an agr, it's not an activity that's allowed, it's a business taking place on a farm.
Right.
It's not farming.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, so that, that winds up being the big issue, is getting, getting the agritourism designation, I guess, so it's a zoning appeals board?
Well, no, it's, it's coming to me with, with stating what it is that you're going to do under that statute.
Okay.
If I am comfortable with the definition of agritourism, which I saw have that, and that it fits, then I can say, okay. If I'm not, if I say, nope, I don't think that's agritourism, then you can go to the BCA and have them decide.
I see, okay.
I'm sorry, Dave, I led you astray there.
Yeah.
Well, no, I.
Agritourism is very strange from, I don't know, bureaucratic approach or whatever, the state of Ohio in general tells us what we can do. This time, they told us what we had to do.
Okay.
And that we had to permit agritourism.
Okay.
And we, there's, there are some things that we can regulate about it. So in other words, if you're going to go with agritourism, then we have to look at the ingress and egress on your property for traffic. We have to look at your parking, there are some things that we have to be concerned about. There are other things that we have no concerns over, unlike some of the other normal zoning procedures that we go through. So it's, it's new and it's unusual, so it's not surprising that people don't understand exactly how it works.
Right.
But the sense I had the last time I talked with agrarian representatives was that you were still trying to make up your minds what it was you were going to be doing.
I see.
And I didn't feel pressured to say, okay, if you're trying out this or trying out that. If you've got a definite program now and you know where you're going, yet it's time to make sure that that meshes with the zoning.
Okay. All right, then, you know, I think I do, I do want to go to Susan and make sure that we have, you know, the right approach to go, you know, to bring to you in that, you know, in that area with that purpose. So then, you know, I mean, it's, it's not great for the timing, but I'm going to say, maybe there's still a chance, you know? You guys have a couple more meetings before we have to go do with the grant, and it's possible that we could submit without this, you know, particular issue being resolved, and then, you know, there's not, that there, there's kind of a timeline with the grant. And, you know, it's, it's strict in certain areas that you have to have upfront, but it's not, you know, it doesn't expect everything to, you know, be bought, sold, stamped, and and.
I'm going to ask a question, that when you apply, do you have to give any kind of indication of the estimated traffic on the, on the path, on the trail?
No.
Or, or number of people that you're serving at your destination?
I don't, there's not a heavy emphasis on that. I'll have to look at the application again and see if it asks for those numbers. We may, we may have supplied some speculative numbers last year, but I don't know that it really is required.
What, from, from my vantage point, and I'm not the trustees, is that for Miami Township as a governmental entity to support, say, you know, we endorse this trail, it's got to be to the benefit of a significant number of Miami Township residents, not just, you know, us, some small quantity, because then we're, because we're talking about a lot of money to build this trail. I mean, it isn't coming out of the pockets of the township residents at the present time, but is that, you know, an effective use of the money? Or would it make more, you know, are we, are we fighting for dollars that should go to the Clifton Connector, or should go to the bicycle path, the Yon's, or, you know, some other trail that might serve more people in the township?
Yeah, well, you know, our, what we've done so far has definitely served local residents to a large degree. There have certainly been people from out of the area that have also come, but primarily it's served local residents, and that's a huge priority for us and remains. And then the grants that we got from the Ohio EPA for educational programming definitely, it allows that to, you know, to expand, I mean, I don't know, I, as far as Miami Township itself goes, that's mainly the residents that you're talking about, right? So if I talk to you about.
Well, that's, we are Miami Township here, that's who we're, that's who we're representing.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, I, it's definitely, you know, a lot of the programming directly serves local residents. So we can, you know, we can provide figures of what we've done so far, and what are just our scheduled activities for the year, what kind of impact they would have.
These gentlemen might want to know that.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely can, can get, you know, if you want to see numbers of what, you know, the, we think that, you know, what we've, who we've served so far and what we'll serve this year, we can definitely provide that.
Yeah, that'd be great, and perhaps a more up-to-date benefits.
Yeah.
Statement.
Yeah, for sure, we'll provide that.
Okay, anything else, Tom?
Nope.
Richard, Dave, Dale Margaret?
Thank you so much for all of this, I really appreciate it.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Okay, we're going to jump across the room.
Dave, you're welcome to listen to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Dale Arnold, Director of Energy, Utility, and Local Government Policy with the Ohio Farm Bureau. I've known Don for a number of years. I've been with the Ohio Farm Bureau for thirty-four years, twenty-some, well, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, in the position I'm in right now. Ohio Farm Bureau is a member organization. When you join Farm Bureau, or you join the county where you live, the State Farm Bureau, which is the Ohio Farm Bureau, and the American Farm Bureau, all in one membership, vertically integrated system. Depending where you're at, basically, in Ohio, it could be anywhere between a low of two-hundred-and-ninety-five to fourteen-thousand member families, because the membership is with the family. The State Farm Bureau has a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand member families, and the American Farm Bureau has four-point-five million. See, I work for the Ohio Farm Bureau, so I coordinate and work with a lot of counties and help them do things on a regional level, or as a group that no one county can do alone. In energy development, I'm the person, basically, when a Farm Bureau member or community basically has an issue and need or concern having to do anything with oil and gas, pipelines, electric transmission lines, interconnection basically with utilities, wind, solar, biomass, fuel cell, energy planning, interconnection with those particular types of things, community aggregation, that, I'm the person, basically, as a specialist, to come out there and help them with regard to it. So I don't work for state or federal government, I don't work for an energy service provider, I work for, basically, our members. Don and I have had a nice relationship over the last several years, because I also do work in education programs for the Township Trustees Association, and I've done a number of those at your state conference with Heidi Foul over the years, as well as with the County Commissioners Association in Energy Development. This is the start of a conversation. I'm not going to be able to tell you everything you want to know when it comes to energy development links here just in one night, but this is where I basically start. And I work with a number of your counterparts across the state when they've had questions regarding the energy development. You might consider me what you would call a valid third opinion. And I do work with the Power Siding Board folks, the Public Place Commission, energy service providers, a number of people, basically, in communities, and do that on a very regular basis. So if you have any questions whatsoever, and Don and I have talked over the years and different things, please feel free to have me back again. All you really need to do is call the Green County Farm Bureau and their organization director, and we can do a full briefing for you, for members of the community, and members in regard to that. Reason I'm here, and the request from Don, is you are seeing a lot with regard to energy development here in this area. It might not be oil and gas, it could be pipelines. You'll be seeing a lot with regard to electric transmission infrastructure through here, but the main question I was asked to talk about tonight was regarding the solar development. A lot of things are happening. Within probably an hour to an hour and a half drive from here, you are seeing upwards of about six different large utility-scale solar projects being developed right now under Ohio Power Siding Board jurisdiction. You are going to see several others with regard to that. Here in this particular township, not necessarily yet, but in neighboring townships around you, Green County not yet, but in many of the neighboring counties, you're seeing that already. Don also asked me to talk about what the Ohio Power Siding Board is, because there's been a lot of concerns, too. When you think about it, when you talk about energy development, if this particular project was under fifty megawatts of capacity, if it was a small business, a farm, a factory here, basically, in the area, you would have jurisdiction over that particular siding process. If it's fifty megawatts or more since nineteen-seventy-three, it's the jurisdiction, basically, of the Ohio Power Siding Board. Please rest assured also, too, is the rules and regulations that are in place for renewable energy development are the same rules that are in place if you were going to do a coal-fired generation facility, a natural gas-fired generation facility, a nuclear facility with regard to that. A lot of questions, too, is how do local governments get involved in this particular process? I can understand and appreciate where you're coming from with regards to, you want to take a look at and do a number of things, especially quality of life considerations for the people here in this particular township. There's nothing wrong with regard to that. One of my jobs, basically, Farm Bureau, is helping our members, who are also your constituents, help them get involved in that particular process. In Ohio, it's rather unique, because since nineteen-seventy-three, we have the Ohio Power Siding Board, which if you would think about it, it's different to what you're seeing in Indiana, Minnesota, Illinois, Kentucky, other states, that you literally have a uniformed system and process with regard to power siding in all eighty-eight counties.
You're talking S-I-T-I-N-G?
Yes, S-I-T-I-N-G, power siding.
S-I-G-H-T-I-N-G.
Yeah. Placement of a power plant.
Right, right, right.
Anything having to do with transmission over thirty-two kilovolt capacity across the line, and anything having to do, if this was a wind plant, anything over five megawatts of capacity is an economically significant wind farm. But everything else is fifty megawatts of capacity or more, which is solar. In Ohio, you've had that structure in place since that particular time. It is a uniform set of rules, a uniform set of technical requirements, a uniform set of evaluation processes and different things with regard to that. In years past, it's served us extremely well. In my work with the Ohio Farm Bureau over the last thirty years, we advocate, basically, for utilization of the process. And in that process, there is a tremendous amount of requirements with regard to technical, aesthetic, economic, quality of life, those particular types of processes. I would also like you to think about it this way, if you don't remember anything else I've said tonight, is that process in this state is a judicial process. I want you to think about it, basically, as a court process, because if you're going to do any permitting with regard to power siding or transmission lines above thirty-two kilovolts, that process, basically, is very much a judicial one, which means this, the case, basically, or the project, and they're trying to, and will be applying for what's called a certificate of convenience, public need and necessity, or in layman's terms, a permit, is that in that, it's a proceeding, an attorney examiner with the power of a judge will have the jurisdiction over that particular process. There will be a number of hearings and evaluation programs with regard to it. There will be the opportunity, if you want to become a party of record in those proceedings, with regard to examination, cross-examination, delivery of evidence, anything you can do in a judicial proceeding, in a local court, you'll be able to do there. There's also a process.
Township can be a.
Yes, what I'm saying is this.
There's again a.
Yeah, a party of record. What I'm saying, giving you an idea, and I can get into more detail or answer more questions, but that's the process here. What's interesting about this process, people have been asking, well, how does the local government get involved in this process? And believe it or not, there's the opportunity, and I call it the responsibility for local governments to get involved, basically, in the process, where you, with your county prosecutor, who is your legal counsel, as you said, you have the ability to become a party of record in those particular proceedings, which means, say, if someone wants to do a project, be it a solar farm, here in this particular township, you have the right, and I would say the responsibility as township trustees, where you can file a motion to intervene, become a party of record in the case. As a matter of fact, under the law and under the rules of Power Siding Board, local governments, township, county, municipal that are impacted, automatically have right of intervention. All they have to do is request to be involved, basically, in the case proceedings. We're involved in a number of case proceedings. I'm involved right now through Farm Bureau, on behalf of our members, involved in nine different solar farm siding cases across the state. To do that, I've had to file a formal motion to intervene and show with regard to laws why we should be considered, basically, having intervention status or party of record status. I can tell you this, based on our policy, based on the work that we have done, based on the collective experience of our members, we've been able to become parties of record in all those particular cases. It does allow us, basically, to take a look at the number of special particular needs that you want to have addressed as this project goes forward, which means this, if this does happen in this township, be it a transmission line case, be it a pipeline case under their jurisdiction, which you might see here, or be it, basically, a solar farm, you have the right, basically, to intervene in that case, and you have the right to negotiate a number of stipulations and agreements with regard to quality of life.
What kinds of, give some, an example?
An example with regard to that?
It might be effective.
No, it might be effective? Well, we're sitting right now, if you take a look at it, basically, who has fire protection for the township? The question is, if you have a generation facility, which this will become, who has fire protection for that? Your township fire department. Who should be doing training in different things, so your firemen have training, that there is a mishap there, or something needs to be done, they have specialized training to be able to address those particular needs of that facility? The company should be working very closely with you, that on a very regular basis, more than just once in a lifetime, or probably once or twice a year, come and do special training, basically, with you guys regarding that. Do you need special equipment? Who should pay for that? It shouldn't come, basically, from the tax dollars or different things of the community, but companies should pay for that, basically, itself. That's one provision. Who provides the security for it? You have a local township police department, same way there with regard to that. If you did, you know, security and different things, what are some things, specialized training? training that needs to be done there? Those are things you can stipulate, those are things that you can advocate for in the judicial proceedings regarding that, those are things you can negotiate.
Drainage?
Well, I want to say this too. There are seven particular things that the Power Siding Board has to take a look at by Ohio statute before they are allowed to issue a certificate. One of those has to do with water conservation practices, which means basically farm drainage. If you think about it, this is going to be on a piece of land someplace in the township. Much of the area basically is agriculture. You have a lot of farmers that over the years who have invested in farm drainage, be it subsurface field tile, be it gabions or any other kinds of conservation surface practices. One thing that we negotiated in this process, and I say welcome aboard, you know why I'm in here, this, I used to be the executive director of the Ohio Land Improvement Contractors Association, the drainage contractors. I understand the ag engineering extremely well. Negotiating in there, if this particular piece of ground's use is going to change from agriculture to power production, which it will, there's a number of different conservation practices and drainage structures in there because that piece of ground not only drains that particular area, but is part of the drainage coefficient for the entire valley. All those need to be maintained, all those need to be upheld, and all those cannot be changed. I want you to also think about this. Another provision would be, if you take a look at, working with the landowner, that ground might be in corn, wheat, bean production or animal husbandry. It is going to change because you can put a solar array on there. What are you gonna put underneath that? Are you gonna gravel that all off? Could that also be utilized for grasses and different things? What are you going to plant underneath there? Should you have a say on what kind of vegetative material, what kind of maintenance schedule, what kind of moaning and different things you're going to do there? There are 27, by Ohio Revised Code, there are 27 different grasses, weeds, different things that are considered obnoxious, which means those can't be there. One thing we've been able to do with the projects going forward, that are now permitted, pollinator habitat is absolutely positive. Bees, butterflies, special flora and fauna with regard to that, is that something that the local township government can get involved in? The answer is always yes. One thing in the project you'll see from the permit, they have to do a computer enhanced set of pictures of what is this thing going to look like in the community? When you talk about aesthetics, when you talk about the viewscape, are there some things that can be done with regard to land forming? Trees, fencing, other vegetative masking, other ways of aligning basically the solar array basically to be aesthetically pleasing? Do you have a say with regard to that? Can you work with local landowners and others with regard to that and the companies part of the process? The answer is, oh yes. That's another reason basically for that. When you talk about taxes, it's interesting, while agricultural ground is governed by CAUV and outstandingly correct, when you take a look at power production ground or utility ground, it's the highest tax bracket. Tax brackets are changing. You have what's called a pilot payment or payment in lieu of taxes, which means this, the company has the opportunity and responsibility, if this is gonna be a renewable energy facility, there are a number of prerequisite requirements by the Ohio Revised Code. One of those is they can go in to apply with the Director of Development or Development Service Agency, DSA, showing that this particular facility is a renewable energy facility. If it meets those prerequisite requirements, they receive a certificate directly from the Department of Development saying that they are. The next step is, under the law, they go basically to the county government here in Green County. The county government has the ability to do one of three things. Number one is that if they have that certificate, they can at any time, if they want to, through resolution, make the entire county a renewable energy development zone, which means any company that meets those prerequisite requirements that wants to come to Green County has the ability to do so. Or they can take a look at each individual project and approve each individual project.
What do you mean by approve?
Approve, which means this, the ultimate saying of them being able to have the pilot tax provision, even though they have a certificate from the Department of Administrative Services, is with the county commissioners, is local with regard to that. Or they can say, no, if not, there's other taxing things and no one's gone to that particular point, but the focus is, the final say with regard to the taxing structure is in the county and in the local government. You have the opportunity to work with them in that process because here in this state, until the law changes, and the law will be up for review in 2020, which means you need to be involved in that process, but the law right now basically says this, as this is being negotiated, you're looking with the formula, if you're given approval by the county government, you are taxed, or the structure of your taxes on the number of megawatts of capacity a project has. It doesn't have to be shining sun all the time and different things. It doesn't go on the amount of megawatts that go out, it's on the capacity of the project. So say for instance, this is a 100 megawatt facility. The basis basically is $7,000 per megawatt of capacity. There's also additional negotiations between the county government, township governments need to be involved in that particular process, where between 7,000 and a maximum of 9,000, based on the amount of local employees they employ, the amount of equipment and material they use sourced from local companies, that can go anywhere from 7,000 to $9,000 maximum. That money stays in the county. The majority of it with regard to the formula, which is set basically by the Ohio Revised Code and is followed by your county auditor, goes to your local schools. Another part of that goes to the general fund of the county, and another part of that goes to the general fund of the township where it's located, which means being involved in those particular negotiations is huge. Also remember this, not everything basically is covered by a tax base. You know as well as I do, when you're talking about the projects you're doing with community solutions, or you're talking about local parks, or you're talking about local development programs that go beyond the tax base, who are the first people that you see for donations and different things are usually the local businesses, your neighbors. This project is going to be your neighbor and they need to understand that for a long time, which means this, do you have the right with regard to quality of life provisions to negotiate on a very regular basis, that company reporting to you on a number of things it's doing in the community and having some things down that over the next 10, 20, 30 years, you are gonna be making X investments in this community along these lines and discussing it with township trustees and local government to do so.
Is there precedent for that?
No, there isn't, but I'll tell you this, that's always been part of the project, that's always been part of the rules. And until very recently, very few people understood that. Case in point, I will tell you this, schools understand that. And schools have used it extremely well in southeastern Ohio when you had a large coal fire generation facility. I grew up in Knox County. My mother's from Keshatin County. I'm a product of a mixed marriage. But no, my mother's family's from Keshatin County. You have Conesville Generation Station, which was established in 1957. At that time, basically, schools consolidated in Keshatin County and a number of agreements were made through this process where that particular facility would be invested in Ridgewood, Keshatin City, and in the western part of the county, which was Riverfield. And that's a number of provisions that they have done. You have the ability on that scale to do it here. I'm not saying it's going to be millions upon millions of dollars, but it's not a jump change either. That's always been part of the process. One of the reasons I'm here, and one of the reasons why Heidi Foul has had me do training with township governments at the Township Trustees Association, is to make them aware that they have that opportunity and responsibility to do that. Just about anything and everything is negotiable in a stipulated agreement. Because in many cases, there are a number of things with regard to quality of life that are also negotiated as part of this process, that is also basically given with regard to evidence, which is part of a particular case settlement, which is signed in this agreement and is on file and becomes part of this particular case forever and a day. Those are things to be taking a look at.
Could I pause you?
Sure.
I'm getting a long enough list of questions that I'm afraid I have to worry to forget some of them.
No, you're fine.
When, let's say, I own land and I lease to the power company, who's paying the property taxes? It's my land.
Well, that's correct. And what we tell members is this, is that remember, you have a responsibility for that because you still own the land. And you know as well as I do, the minute the use of that land changes, the tax changes. It goes from CAUV...
So this is my next question.
Yes.
You heard me reading like fine print at the end of the contract, the definition of agriculture, and it says, well, agricultural production, electric or heat energy production.
Well...
The state says that's agriculture.
Well, remember this, the state basically would say it's agriculture, and I would say this, that's interpreted for onsite generation, distributed generation. If I wanted to have my own farm and I wanna put my own solar array up for my own personal use.
So is that how the courts have looked at this?
That's how they...
Because that's how I've thought about it from a zoning standpoint.
Yes, that's how it look at, but I'll tell you this, when you're talking about and the permits involved with this, which are federal and state, it's considered a power facility.
Okay. But what's, I, what I'd like to know is that in between, less than 50 megawatts, more than my personal use or my private use or whatever, is that agriculture or is that commercial?
Anything over 50 megawatts is considered...
No, not, I want under 50 megawatts.
Well, remember this, under 50 megawatts, and again, I've also done training with a lot of township trustees, not necessarily down through here, but in what we'd call UCLA, Upper Canton, Lower Akron, that where if you need to upgrade your local zoning ordinances to accommodate what you're seeing with regard to wind and solar and other onsite renewables and different things, I can help you with regard to that. I do that particular type of training. A number of townships, and this is another reason I'm here, are looking at those particular rules and regulations because the technology very much is changing.
You're saying we do have jurisdiction under 50...
That's correct, for what? For solar, under 50, you do.
So it depends on the wording of your particular zoning code.
And also remember this, if you'd have that there, that's great because things you wanna take a look at, to upgrade that, is that, you know, the size, you wanna also take a look at the technology being used. To make a long story short, instead of going and trying to make a set of zoning ordinances about that thick, there are a number of things you can do with current rules and regulations that show basically is this, if you're doing this for personal use, effective interconnection agreement on file with the incumbent utility, which is Dayton Power and Light, or your municipal, number one. Number two, all equipment meets underwriter's laboratory and AC triple E or the American Council of Energy Engineers compliance with regard to that. You have adequate insurance rider on your farm owner's, ranch owner's home business insurance. You also have a provision in there that this will continue to be serviceable and you have a service contract with the company, a service provider to do regular care, maintenance, upkeep, and also decommissioning. If this thing basically shuts down or becomes dilapidated within six months, you basically have the ability through zoning to have it basically removed. You also have, and this is very important because people in UCLA found this out very quickly, is if I decide to do this on my home and I live in a five acre lot, well, that's great, where am I gonna put it? Probably down there in the corner where I didn't see it, which means this, it's going to be in a corner where my neighbor's going to see it, which means placement of those. And also too is this, this doesn't happen with regard to solar, but it will with regard to wind because if you decide to put your own wind turbine on, you wanna have setbacks and such that if there is an adverse event, a tornado or something, it falls and stays on your property and does not fall across the line to kill your neighbor's dog.
But here's, oh, okay. I don't, I don't wanna get into that. We used to have windmills, they're exempt.
Okay.
All right, you know, the, or at least they are, you know, based on my book. But the other one I wanna know is that you were talking about the responsibility of the corporate interests who do a large...
Yes.
...solar array. Do they have any, you know, the, the pattern even here in Ohio is that farms have gotten bigger, which means old farmsteads have been sold off at separate parcels. So you have residences scattered around that are, that have nothing to do with farming now.
Right.
Okay. The, the farms in the area lease all their land and suddenly my piece of property is now in the middle of a solar array.
Right.
And it's not as nice as it used to be.
Well, I remember...
No matter how many trees or bushes they plant...
I understand that, because I'm gonna tell you...
Is that a taking of any sort?
No, that is not considered a taking because you're still able to use your particular property, and I hate to say this, but economic value is not one of those protections guarded by the Constitution. However, can groups of landowners with competent legal counsel who are facing that particular issue be involved in this case as an intervening party? And the answer is yes.
Yeah, but would they have any effect?
Yes, they would. Because remember this, one thing that's interesting is while this company has to have a number of state and federal permits for interconnection, safety and those particular types of things, these plans are not considered vital services plans. These plans basically are considered what are called merchant plans. Now, farmers really get them in an agriculture based business, but you know, it's interesting, we talk about corn, wheat and beans, prices are set like commodities, supply, demand over time, calls, puts, collars, futures contracts. Energy, flow of electrons, is the same way. These companies are building these basically as merchant plants. They will have 30-year, long-term power delivery contracts with a number of folks through an energy service provider contract. They're not vital services plant, which also means this, my friend, eminent domain provisions do not apply, which means the ability to negotiate a number of key provisions, like the ones you're taking a look at, are very much part of the process.
I mean, on one hand, I figure not my backyard shouldn't be a way of preventing...
No, but...
...one of these activities because where, where is it that it should be?
Yeah.
Okay?
Because you...
But on the other hand, there will be, you know, some small number of people that are adversely impacted, no matter how nicely it's done.
I know.
And we're saying that's just the way it is. That's what I'm making sure about.
That's true, because I tell you this, this is not perfect, it's not the best of all possible worlds, and I understand where you are coming from. I guess it's my work to try to mitigate as much of that basically as possible. And yes, I have shown folks who have those particular concerns how to get involved in this process to advocate their position for effective settlements, for movement of solar panels, for a number of particular things. Yes.
You told me you have an electronic file for the PowerPoint presentation...
Yes.
...that you would email us.
Yeah, I can give you a copy of that. I would also say this, if you would like to have us do a full briefing, because I'm just going over the tip of the iceberg tonight, please call the Green County Farm Bureau. I can also give you the contact information for the organization director and we, the meeting that we did over by...
City, yeah.
Yeah, we could do that again. I could also basically update it because I'm doing that on a very regular basis. A meeting with a number of folks in a number of townships from as far away as, as Wayne County and Worcester to as close as some folks in Crepeau County over the last few days, going into January and February. But it's, it's something, because I tell you this, you are going to be seeing a tremendous amount of energy development basically happening over the next decade or so. And I tell people this, you might see, you know, I'm working with folks right now, pipelines, transmission lines, combined cycle natural gas fire turbine generation, wind, solar. That will not be the only single project you will see, but what you learn working with one energy service provider is going to serve you extremely well. That experience is going to serve you... That experience is going to serve you again when you have the opportunity and the responsibility to negotiate or discuss with another energy service provider.
To the larger developer, the seller developers like that are going around here and looking for leases, are, are they obligated to notify local governments once they get to the point where they put together the fifty megawatts, I guess.
Yes, they do. There, I tell you this, there's a number of things they are allowed to do legally before that tipping point. In many cases, you'll find out through here is that are they able to sit down and talk to farmers at their kitchen table? The answer is yes. Are they able to do lease negotiations with individual farmers? The answer is yes. When you talk about the tax thing with regard to CAUV, now you know why I work a lot with farmers because there's a number of things that need to be in that agreement with regard to taxes, with regard to liabilities, and that's one of them.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, they will do a number of particular things. But after a certain tipping point, their first step in the process is they have to go and have a conference with the staff of the Ohio Power Siding Board.
Sure.
State their intentions and start their particular process with local open house meetings, local education and outreach, having an office with full-time staff in the community where they're going to be located. A number of things come basically into play.
And those are required before there's any approval?
That is correct. Um, also too, when the application is deemed complete, there are a number of things. It takes anywhere between eighteen to thirty-six months for them to do all the technical requirements and research required for a permit. Do not be a bit surprised if you see a number of subcontractors that they hire. They do everything from investigation of flora and fauna, the economic development work, um, to, to technical work basically with PJM, which is your, you know, connection network, local utilities and that. I tell a lot of farmers, you're going to see a lot of indiscreet, in, in the script, white trucks and Jeeps coming out. Um, archaeological work and different things is part of that particular process. But you'll see a number of those things there. Once the permit is deemed complete by the Ohio Power Siding Board, you will be served with a copy of it.
Your general.
Yes, your fiscal officer will get one of two things. From Federal Express, you'll get three boxes that weigh about twenty-five pounds apiece, and everything will be hard copy. Or what they're allowed to do right now, you'll get a book with three or four DVDs in it, with the entire particular application. You will also see that it's a matter of public record, which means you'll be able to access it on the docket, docket card by number on the website and download just about anything. Or for those folks who don't have computers, like our, our Amish friends and neighbors, local public library, a full hard copy of the project permit process has to be on file there for public.
That's a good reading.
Are your presentations available in printed form or only verbally?
Well, this is what I do because there are so many wonderful questions. I will come and do a briefing, and then afterwards, I have different handouts and different things I can give folks. Also too, another thing we do for our particular members, access to legal counsel is crucial. Um, twenty-five, thirty years ago, when you saw a lot of oil and gas and energy development, there were a number of local attorneys who were well-versed in energy law. There's been a law from the nineteen seventies until the beginning of this century where many of them got retired, left the state, or dead. There's probably, I would say, a half a dozen to a dozen different law firms with attorneys with this knowledge, skill, and expertise. Half of them will not be able to help you because they are working directly for an energy service provider. The other half are working for small towns, um, they're working for farmer, small business, residential consumers. We have a list of those. We don't endorse any one law firm. But I have a list of twelve that we refer people to who are well-versed in this type of law. To be on that list, um, they have to be referred by Farm Bureau members. They go through an interview process, and they're constantly being evaluated with regard to their performance. And yes, we've taken a couple off the list because they've gone over to the dark side of the force. But we show people with regard to that.
Last time I heard Dale give a presentation, the presenter afterwards was Dylan Borchers from Yellow Springs.
Yeah, Dylan is.
He is an attorney?
Yeah, he's with Bricker and Eckler. Uh, Dylan works with Sally Bloomfield. He also works with Devon Perran. Um, he's involved with several cases representing wind and solar developers throughout the state. And yes, there are times I sit across from him and negotiate in a stipulated agreements on the projects that have gone to the power side of the board so far, but I know Dylan extremely well. I would also say this, because I can stand to be corrected, but I understand Yellow Springs is its own municipal electric company.
Yes.
Yeah, Amp Ohio, who I work with also there.
We're in Ohio.
Yes, uh, with Jolene Brown and Julie Blankenship before she was there. Uh, the number of municipal electric companies who are looking at this to serve their constituency, which is also huge. Bowling Green Municipal Electric Company has its own wind plant on US six, south of town, which is also shared under amp contracts with nine other municipal electric companies, from Bryant to Kaiser Falls. They also have under operation their solar array north of town, north of Fairgrounds on sixty-five. The closest one to you, and it might be worthwhile to take a look at for a number of things, is Minster, Ohio, which is about an hour and fifteen hour, twenty minutes from here along I seventy-five. They have their own solar array. It has enough megawatt capacity to serve the regular base note load needs of the community. But it doesn't serve, the, the electricity generated from the solar array does not go directly into the service grid. They also invested in what's called battery backup capacitor or storage system. And so the solar arrays power and charge the capacitor, and that serves the community. And so it's baseload seven twenty-four, three sixty-five. But it gives you some idea about what the municipals are doing. Also municipal electric, electric companies are regulated by community charter, as you know. They are not under PUCO jurisdiction, which means they have full say with regard to how those are particularly developed. Uh, when it comes to transmission line capacity, whatever, however, I think you have to go to the power siding board outside of this is a whole big one. Also the cooperatives, the rural electric cooperatives, which are governed by federal charter, are doing similar programs. But that's what's going on so far.
Richard, did you have any, you said you had a quick question?
One, one question I sort of tried to bring out, and I, I didn't get, for me, a clear answer, which is, okay, I'm, I see three categories of power generation. I see power generation for what I'm going to call personal use, or, or my, my business, okay?
Right.
I'm going, I, on one end. On the other end is power generation, and we're talking solar for the most part right now, above, um, fifty megawatts, that's regulated by the siding board. That category in between, all right, you know, forty megawatts of generation. I'm selling power to a municipality, the grid, whatever. I'm selling power. Is that considered to be agriculture, or can I regulate it?
If it's under fifty megawatts, yes, you can. As a matter of fact, any project under fifty megawatts.
Even though it sits here and calls it agriculture.
That's correct. Because remember this, um, under Ohio law, production of generation for sale is not agricultural product yet. But, yeah, it comes under that particular jurisdiction.
So that would still be a commercial.
That's correct. Now you also understand, appreciate why you see, um, many, if not all, of these solar projects above fifty megawatts capacity, many of them start at one hundred. Um, there are seven things that the power siding board needs to consider before it renders its decision. Um, one of those is the need for the facility. When you talk about electricity being local, PJM, which is Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland interconnect, that is a network of power generation and large-scale transmission lines that link a number of communities and utility service systems, such as DPNL. Your local municipal electric company has part of that under PJM. That is parts of thirteen different states, from the Carolinas to Chicago. That's local, which means when that hits the system under trade arbitrage, you can actually call possession of that in thirteen states. Many people need to understand that. When you talk about local production, local production is thirteen states. And the need for power junction is absolutely huge. Uh, when you talk about technical capability, being able to do this efficiently, effectively, safely, reliability, that comes under the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, PJM, and what's called NERC, or the North American Electric Reliability Council, which means this, I have to have a permit. This is my technical capability. If I'm going to put this solar array here, and I'm going to interconnect it in the system here, it has to meet all those requirements for safety, reliability, those things, that's federal. Um, probable environmental impact on the community, should you have part of the say with regard to that? The answer is yes, which means that's one of the things there. Water and air quality compliance. Yeah, because remember this, when they're building it, if you're crossing a stream, dust control, those types of things, that has to air and water. Should you have a say with regard to that? The answer is yes. Um, facility for public interest, convenience, and necessities, as I said, local is thirteen states. Public, that thing is a thirteen-state particular area. It's not local. When we say, when it, when it talks about being local, that's what local means in those. Uh, impact on viability of agricultural land. We talk about farm drainage, we talk about soil, we talk about all that.
Yeah, one of the things that comes to my mind, that the temptation would be to cut down all the hedgerows.
Well, yeah.
But then it, then it's not viable agricultural land after that.
Which means this, that all has to be basically negotiated. Clear cut is not necessarily going to mean, you know, those are the things, and should you have a say in being able to negotiate that? The answer is yes. Also, water conservation practices, farm drainage, yes. And so, yes, there's the big three having to do with that that are technical requirements, that are multi-state, different things. But when you take a look, there are four requirements that need your input in some way, shape, or form. You see how important it is for the local governments to get involved in this process. There are a number of local governments in eastern Ohio because of coal-fired generation and different things there from the early part of the thirties through the end of the last century. They understood and appreciated that, and have done these practices using this. But when you're talking about power generation, which is going from very, very large centralized systems to more decentralized ones, the ability basically, this is a once-in-a-generation, or for many folks, especially in western Ohio, this is a rather new basic approach, which means the ability and the need for new education and outreach to bring county governments up to speed, township governments up to speed, schools up to speed, is huge.
It occurs to me that, that putting out, you know, it's a brand-new thing, but nevertheless, putting out quite a bit of energy in the planning phase is probably going to be worthwhile because suppose, let's say, a solar array gets built, and then there are drainage problems. Getting them fixed is going to be very difficult.
Well, now you understand basically the need to have engineers, the need to have land improvement contractors, the need to take a look at that. Case in point, I'd say this, I'm not going to name the company, but just last week, in a conference with the power siding board, one of the folks basically in a project that's coming forward said, we have a concern with regard to farm drainage and that. Who do we talk to? And they said, you know, just up the street is this crazy guy at the Ohio Farm Bureau. His name is such-and-such. Give him a call. I got a call, and I met with them, and I said, all right, if you're talking about doing these structures, here are some competent land improvement contractors, soil technicians, others that you can work with at the local and state level if you create your plan. And yes, we're going to be involved basically as a stipulating party in that, having to do with farm drainage. It's interesting too, is this, someone I, some of the people I've worked with, not only in solar, but in wind and in pipelines, you're going to be working with engineers who have probably put in power stations all over the world, but this is their first time east of the Mississippi. And when one of them basically says, you know, Mr. Arnold, what's this stuff called field tile? That's where the conversation starts. Because remember this, don't ever cut yourself short. I tell farmers this, yes, you're going to be working with experts who know how to put power generation just about any place in the world. But your area of expertise basically is farming and agriculture and land drainage and those things, which they know nothing about. When given the opportunity and asked a question, that is a teachable moment, and you need to teach them.
The other fear that, that I've heard brought up is, okay, so one of two things, the, the project is implemented and, uh, the company looks bankrupt. Or something like that, or the, the project goes for its thirty-year lifespan, and then nobody wants it anymore. It's not viable. What makes it get removed?
That's a good question. Because I tell you, if this was a wind project, and this was in the enabling legislation basically for wind, is that you have to post a bond and financial instrument, which means the financial resources are there before you break ground. If this thing needs to be decommissioned and torn out by the state because you're belly up, the financial resources are there. They're not there yet for solar, which I tell landowners, this is what you need to do, and you need to have in your lease agreement, where they post a financial bond, which means if they go belly up, that financial bond is surrendered, and those resources basically remove or decommission the facility from your land.
So, so you can ask for a bond anyway?
Oh, yes, because a lot of people are finding us out too. Anything and everything that you have is negotiable. Everything in those particular leases with a farmer negotiable too. And also remember this, you have the ability to also say this, well, if you are going to be here, and it's not stated in the individual lease agreement you've negotiated with the farmer, you're going to be in our township, consequently, we would like to see negotiated, there is a financial bond where that basically is, is done.
Yeah.
Yeah, because also remember, yeah, because also remember this, this is also very important because each of these renewable energy projects are designed to be easily upgradable. Do not be a bit surprised, after ten years of operation, the company comes in with more effective technology and replaces the solar panels. You see a hundred megawatt facility go to a hundred.
Yeah, that, that doesn't surprise me. That possibility, I mean, it's like the cell towers are constantly changing.
Changing, which also means this, you want to make sure the financial instruments are in place that if they are seeing a greater economic benefit because of the upgrade, the community sees it. And you want to negotiate that into a stipulated agreement too.
But.
In defining this minimum, well, in defining the size, fifteen megawatts. Uh, do, does the land have to be contiguous?
Not necessarily. I will tell you this, um, you have some very large, one thousand acre tracts with two or three of the projects, where it's one landowner and that, or you see a couple of, um, if you went to, let me think, in Brown County, which is Hillcrest, that is a thousand acre facility, but it's not thousand continuous acres. There are one hundred acre patches with ten different landowners in a three township area.
But for the fifth, but to reach the fifty, does it have to be contiguous?
Yes. And I tell you, economically, you're going to see that because you're going to have to have an interconnection point. You're going to have to have a centralized substation and collection point to the transmission line, which means economically, it's going to have to be continued, you know, connected with that particular area. Well, I feel like this is a good basis for more questions. Yeah, but.
But I think the other one is that the individual landowners need to know all the points that they need to cover before they make that lease, because the lease isn't uniform. Every, every lease could be different with every landowner.
Well, remember this, there's no such thing as a group lease. They are all individual contracts. contracts, which means this, welcome to my world, helping them understand-
The landowner that doesn't remember to put the bond in, is it going to have a bond?
So, I handed out, uh, those who sign this on the hood of their pickup truck, do it at their own peril. You're correct. Yes.
Uh, Ohio State Extension Service has printouts, you know, has memos for-
Yeah.
What to do.
Eric Romig does a wonderful job of it.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think it answers-
No, no, I think-
And I handed this out at, it comes to land-
Do we want to, as, as, as government, to distribute that information?
Well, we actually, we talked about it and said that I would be allowed to spend township money to mail to, uh, landowners, and I haven't done that, but I did distribute when the council land trust had a, uh, land, of landowners resource event, something like that, uh, last month. I hope I've given you enough, basically, that you want to, I've left with more questions than answers, that's my-
That's good.
Yes. But I'm saying this, if you would like to continue this conversation, please have me back again, there, there's nothing in the rulebook that says I can only come here once. And there have been some townships in northern Ohio, I've been back to four, five, or six times, to give updates and things, or they've worked closely with their county farm bureaus, where the county farm bureau has sponsored myself and others to come in to do workshops and education outreach with their constituents on this issue, and they'll be more than happy to work with you.
Well, thanks, thanks for the offer, and, and certainly, I can envision if we get to the point where these, uh, lease, lease companies, I forget the name of them, but anyway, if, if they get close to the point where they're getting, uh-
Yeah.
What they say is they need four hundred more acres.
Yeah, I've, I've been told they're-
And they have enough to, you know, to move ahead.
Yeah. They'll be, yeah-
You can finish.
Uh, Richard, finish for me.
Okay.
We've gotten to that point.
Well, there's nothing wrong with it, because I'll tell you this, it's interesting, when companies send out agents to talk to farmers about leasing, uh, there's two or three groups of folks who find out about it very quickly, within a matter of hours, and that's basically you as township trustees, because everybody's saying, "I'm a county trustee on this,"
Yeah.
Or it's the county commissioner's office, and then they also call the farm bureau.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, and there's nothing wrong, you know, there's nothing wrong with that, being able to help folks, and I say, um, in many cases, you know, landowners, and our policy is landowners have the right to enter effective agreements and programs with energy service providers. However, they also have the responsibility to do it well, not only basically for the benefit of their family, but also their community, and that's what we do, we give them a number of tools that they can utilize when they're making those decisions.
That's good.
And as you heard earlier, it's counter to our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Dale, and we appreciate it.
You're quite welcome, sir.
We certainly do. Where are you headed?
I'm going back home to Newark.
Newark?
Newark, yeah. But if you need anything, you have my card, I'll send you a copy of my presentation so you see what we do on workshops. And there, sir, is me, if you've got questions.
Well, I'm more likely to pass it on to constituents that are probably had questions.
All right. Well, gentlemen, if there's no other questions whatsoever, I beg your indulgence, so let me leave.
Certainly, yeah, you, you don't have to wait for the end.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, well, we will certainly-
Thanks for visiting.
Playing on-
You're welcome.
Seeing you a, again, at other venues too.
Okay.
All right.
Nice to meet you.
Watch out for that corner.
You've probably had smaller audiences, but not too much smaller.
No, there's not, oh, I don't ever count, the, the largest group I talked to at one time was on oil and gas, and that was eight hundred people.
Oh.
And the smallest group I've talked to is, I do a lot of work with township trustees, and so, yeah.
Wasn't the farm bureau behind agritourism?
Um, in some cases, yes, but you know, it's interesting, when you talk about agritourism, we just had our state annual meeting, and I really liked what you had to say, because when you talk about agritourism, the root word is aggro.
Pretty much.
And a number of folks are going to try to, under an agritourism banner, to do something contrary to what it is. Um, we have those challenges too. But thank you, sir. Don, good seeing you again, if you need anything else, please give me a call, I look forward to working with you guys again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Drive safely.
Yes, please.
Watch out for those deer.
I do.
Deer are already going to sleep.
Okay, so, moving along, um, fiscal officer report?
Yes, please. Well, as you can see, there's, you had another, um, resolution amending permit appropriation that's twenty eighteen dash fifty-five, and in the general fund, I increased contracted services by forty dollars, and the gas tax fund, I increased medical hospitalization by four hundred and forty-seven dollars, excuse me, and the fire fund, I increased medical hospitalization by one thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, travel and meeting expenses increased by fifty dollars, telephone increased by one hundred and ten, advertising increased by four hundred and eighty, water and sewer increased by twelve dollars, natural gas increased by four hundred dollars, and operating supplies increased by two hundred and forty dollars.
This is our motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen fifty-five.
I shall move.
I second it. Any further discussion regarding this resolution? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
And, um, resolution twenty eighteen fifty-six is a long time coming, it is, uh, um, fund twenty-nine oh-two was originally established to receive FEMA funds when we had a major storm, and I think that was maybe in two thousand and eight. And, um, so every year, at the end of the year, in order to dissolve that fund, it has to be done within the year, within this year, basically, and, and have to transfer the balance out of that fund, and there's been eighty-six cents sitting in that fund forever, and I always forget until the beginning of the new year, and anyway, that's what this, this resolution is to. It says, whereas fund twenty-nine oh-two was established to hold FEMA funds, and whereas the aforementioned funds have been depleted, therefore, fund twenty-nine oh-two is no longer necessary, now therefore, it is the desire of Miami Township to dissolve the fund twenty-nine oh-two and transfer the eighty-six cents balance to the general fund.
I shall move.
I'll second any further discussion regarding resolution two thousand eighteen fifty-six. Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
It's a shame we couldn't have included the Clifton, Clifton Fund, Clifton Pamela's fund that happened.
What?
It's another day.
The Clifton, what now? Um-
What fund?
You might-
Two oh-four-two. No, no, two oh-four, two oh-four-one.
Oh, that's the cemetery that we, we don't do anything with. But, I mean, but we still hold the monies there, so it has to stay there, the kids have it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Richard, your time's up. Couple other things we'll get through here real quick, let's see, Richard, uh, I have nothing for standing committee reports of interest, Don, do you?
Uh, only the, the, uh, you, Clifton Union Cemetery Board did meet. Nothing spectacular to-
No?
Am I missing something?
Not really.
Uh, that can wait till next meeting, that can wait till next meeting. I have asked a local website design person to, to put together a, um, pre, pre, not a presentation, I'm not sure what it's going to work, to, to pretty up our, our new website, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, I want to let everybody know that House Bill five hundred passed, that's the omnibus township bill, there's like fifteen different provisions, only about four or five perhaps are, are applicable to us in our size. I guess the biggest one for us is, uh, if the governor signs it, we'll no longer be able to, to have the position of president and vice president of the, of the board trustees will have to be chair and vice chair.
That's important.
There's a, uh, bill on, on Governor Kasich's desk, which would, uh, give township employees, township elected officials pay raises, um, of, um, one point seven four percent, I guess, beginning in two thousand and nineteen, uh, but that is only applicable to newly elected, early, new term raises, which we, we've come, uh, encountered those before. Richard did tell me that the, the BZA hearing was held last week, and the petition for variance was granted by the, by the applicant. We do need to, uh, within this calendar year, we need to adopt resolution two thousand eighteen fifty-seven, which is the provision with service of Fire Rescue Emergency Medical and Fire Inspection Service from Miami Township, Green County, Ohio, to Bath Township, Green County, Ohio. Before everybody gets all excited, this is basically, word for word, the exact same thing as what was in the agreement that we signed, uh, between two entities, and one of the provisions of that agreement was for a resolution to be passed, and I didn't question it in the past, uh, we discussed it with Bath Township, and we agreed to it, and so, that's what we're doing here.
So the, the amount of dollars in the agreement does not need to be in the resolution?
It is, it's right here, one hundred and ten thousand, fifty-six up front, fifty-four, uh, July fifteenth. So, this, uh, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen fifty-seven.
I shall move.
I'll second any further discussion regarding that resolution. Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, can we be prepared to have a zoning commission nomination this evening?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have nothing further, anyone else? Some old business or new business? I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moves.
All favor.